Order the Thursday, April eighth, twenty twenty one, meeting the Clive City Council with the clerk please color all.
Mayor Xena.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Good evening. Nice to have everybody here. As is our tradition, we we have a scout recite the pledge of allegiance for us and we have young Collier Cofavalli with us today. Collier, nice to see you. Thank you for being here. You can unmute yourself and why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am a seventh grade boy who goes to Milwaukee Middle School. And I've been in scouts for seven years since I was in first grade. And yes, thank you so much for having me.
Well, thank you for being here. You got some great things going on. So I'm going to ask you to recite the pledge for us. You're going to do that. The rest of us will be on mute so we can have good sound quality. So why don't you? Why don't you proceed?
All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, young man. Thank you so much. And you can come back and recite the pledge for us anytime. Hope you have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you again for having me.
You are so welcome. Okay, we'll move with approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second.
By John, second by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Agenda is approved. The next item is citizens' presentation. This is where anyone that's joining us in the meeting and on the call this evening that has something to address the council that is not on the agenda tonight, please make yourself known to Pete via the chat box so he can get you connected to us.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chat box is one way. I'm going to make sure that the chat is enabled for everybody. My name is Pete Beacock if you want to send a direct chat to me. The other way to catch my attention is to use the hand raise function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. You'll see the icons. If you click on the participant icon, a separate window will open up or pop off to the side. And at the bottom of that window, you should see the hand raise function. Tonight, everybody is participating. It looks like the a device where they can see the video. So the the hand raise or the chat should work just fine for all of you. Mayor, at this time, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, thank you, Pete. We'll move next then to a presentation by our friends at Confluence regarding the University Avenue Corridor Plan. And I'm going to introduce Chris Shires to start us off. And Chris, I think you have some some assistance with you, but let's start with you.
Great. Mayor and council, thank you so very much for giving us this opportunity to visit with you. My name is Chris Shires. I'm a principal with Confluence, leading the design team that was hired jointly by the cities of Clive and West Des Moines to work on the University Avenue Corridor Plan. And hopefully you're all seeing the screen that I am sharing of the presentation that we want to walk through with you. Also joining me tonight is Chris Zahas with Leland Consulting Group. I have David Greensfelder as himself as with his consulting services. And then also Greg Kalbaka with Kirkham Michael, providing our engineering services and then not presenting, but also on the call Ted Camp with Leland Consulting and then Jane Reasoner with Confluence. And so with that, if I get my screen to work, there we go. What we want to do tonight is very briefly give you an overview of the project and where we're at, the status of what we're trying to accomplish. Chris and David are going to give you a review of the market analysis and economic analysis they've completed as well as their input on that. We have some initial recommendations we want to walk through you and in fact, to get some of your initial ideas and feedback for us related to some certain areas of interest. And then we want to recap on where our next steps are from here. So definitely appreciate your time tonight, your staff's time tonight. And I think even on this presentation, we have a few additional members of the advisory committee helping to lead this project and maybe even a few West Des Moines staff members. So just a recap of the the project boundary. And so this is a a corridor plan freely for this common area between Clive and West Des Moines bordered by university and the commercial properties and development on the North Side of University into Clive. On the west end at the I eighty Mixmaster, the south end two thirty five, and then kind of the east end Twenty Second Street in West Des Moines. This is kind of that historic retail office business corridor in the community that over time has seen some flux and change. And it's always good for us to continue to plan for its future and how it will evolve. And so this project started out with some goals that we kind of refined that we wanting to increase the economic vitality vitality and desirability of the area. Enable a really a vibrant and sustainable place to live, work, and play, really expanding its current function today by incorporating new residential uses and and try to have it be a little more all all day and night long instead of just a daytime business center that can we have more nighttime activities and interest? You know, looking more than just having it car oriented, that we can make this a place for pedestrians and bikers as well. And then identify those redevelopment areas, strategic opportunity areas within the plan where we can make other improvements, including bike, pad, traffic improvements. Definitely want to spend a little bit of time talking about stormwater improvements for this area, connected green space, and then other features that kind of improve its overall life. We've broken this project into a four-phase process and we're we're still in that kind of phase two, the end of phase two, soon to be entering the draft phase in phase three. And in fact, really what we've been wanting to do for some time is have a big joint workshop with with both cities, commission members and council members and staff to go through these things and kind of set a general tone. And I apologize for some of the problems we've had in meeting scheduling meetings. And so we thought, well, instead of trying to get both very large groups together, we can do some separate meetings. My hope would be is our next meeting might be a big, big joint meeting with both communities involved. And so we've had four meetings with the advisory committee. We've had an interactive website set up that's provided us a lot of valuable public input. We've held seventeen individual meetings with stakeholders, property owners, developers, other peoples of interest in the area. And we've completed our site analysis and opportunities analysis. And so following these two joint workshops, one we have scheduled with you obviously tonight in a follow-up meeting with the West Des Moines Council and Planning Commission. Two weeks from now, we'll have a some draft review meetings with our advisory committee as we actually formulate this plan draft. We want to follow up with our stakeholders that were originally met with in phase one, phase two, and then hold a joint workshop if we can with with everyone. And then finalize finalize that plan and go through that official adoption process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who's going to run through our market analysis and then follow it up with David.
Thanks, Chris. Can you hear me okay, first of all? Is that a can you hear me? All right. So I'm my assumption is that we distributed a more detailed slide deck with a lot of more detail on the market analysis. But I wanted to hit on a few of the highlights of it right now for tonight's conversation. So we looked at all the land uses. We took an overview of the both the the focus area of University Avenue as well as a larger radius around Clive and West Des Moines to understand what are the economic drivers, the growth trends, the things that might influence how the corridor continues to evolve and develop over the next ten and twenty years. So starting with residential, we looked at growth trends and and have basically summarized that there's roughly four fifty to six twenty housing units potential for this area to capture within the corridor over the next ten years. And you could theoretically double that over the next twenty years. That would because it's an urbanized area and we're talking infill, this would largely be multifamily product types, probably largely apartments, but potentially with some ownership units in condos or or townhomes. Yes. Now, where would those fit? Again, it's an infill area. So we would target or identify larger infill areas such as the mall, University Park Shopping Center and larger infill sites where there's single ownership land holdings that have a lot of redevelopment potential. And so those are some of the target areas, but that could happen infill in smaller locations anywhere in the corridor. One element of that multifamily housing growth capture could take the form of senior housing. We've we hear a lot about that. You have the medical center within your corridor within Clive itself and and the existing Walnut Ridge project right next door. So that's an area where in this map shows some of the recent developments in the senior housing market, both recent, both recent and old. And it's an area where the market is really filling its need. There are developers out there that are sort of keeping pace. So we see it as an opportunity and we see it as an area where the development community is sort of doing their thing and seeing the need and filling it. Office is the dominant use aside from retail in the corridor today. And despite some of the trends that the short-term trends that we're seeing related to COVID and work from home, we do see office as a long-term growth industry for the area, particularly given the the hub that you are for finance and insurance jobs. And that, you know, with the larger area growing significantly, this study area itself could still potentially capture two hundred thousand plus square feet of space over the next ten years. And again, potentially more. And that's I would say that's still within the context of COVID. So we do hear a lot about is that going to result in long-term shifts in the office market? And I think there the truth is going to lie somewhere in the middle in in our opinion that yes, there will be some long-term shifts, but there will still be a lot of return back to work when things are able. And then finally, we also looked at next slide, Chris. Hospitality. So you have your hostel, your hotel cluster on the west end by the interstate. It's a very difficult sector to do analysis on this year since it's obviously been probably one of the most impacted land uses resulting from the pandemic. But what we have noticed is that a lot of the shift in new development, recent development in hospitality has shifted south and west to Jordan Creek and and other areas within the region. So what you what we have here is a, you know, kind of an aging second tier hospitality market. But it's still a strong market in terms of you have a strong employment base, group, good location and visibility with the interstate. And but that we're probably not going to see lots of new hotel development. And that would probably be an area where, you know, a deeper dive analysis might be needed on specific sites. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to David Greensfelder, who's our retail specialist, who took a deeper dive specifically looking at retail trends and opportunities in the quarter.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Perfect. Okay. Um, so I want to start just with some very, just some very high level definition. I mean, you can see the study area on the inset, then the the University Avenue Corridor, which has shown essentially the red bar in the middle. If you go to the next slide, you're going to see that we we looked at at several different catchments, a two, a three, and a five mile radius. And and we looked at how how people behaved and how how retail behaved within each of those. As a subset of that, if you go to the next slide, I want to point out something that I think is particularly important here, which is how the gravity works in the trade area. And you can see it by looking at these traffic counts. As you move from south to north, from west to east, you can see that the trail and and even north to south, you know, going into the study area, you can see that the traffic counts continue to increase. And so what this tells us is that people are traveling to the study area in order to in order to shop, in order for to go to work and what have you. So, you know, this gravity pattern in the in the trade area is very important for understanding how we ought to be looking at at where customers are coming from and how traffic patterns affect the size and shape of the trade area. If you go to the next slide, this shows the same thing in slightly different terms. It shows you where people are coming from and the number of people that are coming into the trade area from different locations. Going to the next slide, one of the things that I really want to point out here is that, you know, there is a robust population base. You've got well over a hundred thousand people and well over three miles and well over two hundred thousand and five miles. And and if you if you look at that, you've got an aggregate income. So that's the total income of all the people within those radii of about eight and a half billion dollars or and or eight and a half trillion dollars. If you go and look at Clive specifically, you know, Clive is about fifteen percent of that total while and so that's a very significant amount of disposable income in the Clive area specifically. If you go to the next slide, this shows you resident wages. And the wages are represented by the color of the circles and the population density represented by the size of the circle. So this tells you not only where people are living, but the relative incomes of of the people. And so we're right in the middle of the highest income area in the overall MSA. And on the gravity side of the highest part of the highest incomes of the higher income area. If you go to the next slide, this just begins to show you an idea of pockets of where some of these higher incomes are actually located. So if you go to the next slide, let's talk for just a moment about methodology. Retail is demand driven. The whole notion of build it and they will come makes for a great baseball movies, but it doesn't make for great retail planning. So retail, we need to have the demand before we have the retail. And demand comes from resident population. It comes from new population growth and it comes from the trade area broadening. So for example, if you were to see a new highway built to say a new community on on the edge of the trade area that made it very easy for that community to then come in and shop in the trade area, you would see the broadening of the trade area to in to more allow for more frequent access by those people to the trade area. So those are the primary demand drivers. There also are secondary demand drivers. Those are people who are coming in from outside of the area, visitors, daytime population and and leakage. In other words, sales that are falling out of the trade area. So going on to the next slide, I think that it's important to look at retail, not as, okay, you know, these are our big box stores and these are shop stores and that's our mall and that's our downtown area. I like to look at it and talk about behaviors. So commodity goods are generally things that we buy on a daily basis. All right. And that differentiates from specialty goods, which are the things that we splurge on. So the shopping behaviors that that correspond to commodity goods and services as opposed to specialty goods and services are really quite different. If we're going and doing a grocery trip, that's a much different set of behaviors than if we're going out to dinner or to some sort of an entertainment venue, or if we're going clothing shopping. If you go to the next slide, this slide shows the dispersion of retail in the overall area. So the the red boxes show square feet of retail.
David, hold on one second. It looks like it glitched on my my computer here. If you guys are not seeing it. Sometimes a really large file size like this will crash. So let me apologize for that.
It was I was barreling right along with that.
Yeah, you. So I I apologize. It's these are really graphically. Let me switch screens. You know, these are problems we never had before we had to do everything virtually, right? Ah, there you go. Okay, are you guys seeing a fresh screen now?
There we go. Let's go. Yeah, let's go forward one.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. Let's see if we can get a head of steam built up here again. This slide shows you the organization of retail in the trade area. The larger the red boxes, the greater the number of square feet. This area has significantly more square feet of retail on a per capita basis than the national average. And that's consistent with the idea that, you know, there's a lot of gravity pulling people to this area to shop. So it makes sense that you'd have more than the average amount of retail. That's not to say that we don't have too much. And I think that we're seeing some of that on the ground as we're University Park Shopping Center, for example, or what's happened to Valley West Mall. So there there certainly is evidence that there is too much. But I think even when you subtract those out, you're still going to be left with more than what you would see on an average basis. Next slide, this begins to show you the the retail, the actual retailers is that they're dispersed throughout the trade area. And the next slide is going to show you the retailers that you would find at Jordan Creek. These are just added to the to the deck for reference, for ease of reference. And also to make the point that the specialty retail tends to be more concentrated at Jordan Creek than in the trade area. And part of that is a function of Jordan Creek having emerged as the leading as really the leading retail destination in the trade area, that the the area along the corridor, the trade area has really ceded that to Jordan Creek. But that's not to say that there isn't opportunity for sustainability along the corridor and in this trade area. So if we could go forward to the next slide, we took a look at buying power. And so what we're looking at here is whether there's a surplus, whether whether the difference between what we think there should be demand for and what's actually being sold tells us that people are coming into the trade area or alternatively whether there's leakage. People are going elsewhere to shop. And and as you can see, it varies, it varies by category. Where there's a significant surplus of grocery, for example, but significant leakage in clothing and accessories and in general merchandise. If you go on to the next slide, what we're showing you here is what we think the attainable new demand for retail is. And as we pointed out earlier, there is significantly more retail in the in the study area than you would find generally, you know, as as an average. And that tells you that that the area is in objective terms over retailed. Then you would go to the ground and say, okay, it's over retail, but is that retail full or not? And what we're finding is that the retail is in fact not all full. So we're looking for really a net decrease in total square feet of retail through the trade area. Now, for communities that are dependent upon sales tax, that is often a difficult thing to hear. But what I would like to say is that less square footage of retail doesn't necessarily translate into less sales tax. Because we're looking at, we're we're looking not only at the physical footprint of the retail, but we're looking at the productivity of the retail. And when we have a more vibrant area with less vacancy, you tend to have the retail in that vibrant area be more productive. And as you can see on this slide, what we're showing is what we think there is opportunity for in square feet by category. So let's move along to you know, how we make the area work for everyone. The first thing, and you know, this is continuing on the point that we were just making, is you know, you want a vibrant area. And that means what creating what we like to call active retail. This is where the pedestrian interacts with the with the built environment. Buildings create behaviors and we want the kinds of buildings and the kinds of storefronts and the kinds of transparency that cause people to want to be places. We all know the areas that we like to go to to window shop. And and that's really what we're talking about here as opposed to the next slide where we see inactive uses. This is where the pedestrian doesn't interact. So there is essentially a hole in the fabric of the built environment. And so these are the kinds of things that we want to avoid in the areas that we have that we've designated that we want to have be vibrant retail areas. So let's talk for a minute about mixed use. There are really two different kinds of mixed use. One that is horizontally integrated where one use is next to a different use. And then in the next slide, you're going to see vertically integrated mixed use. I'm sorry, the vertical slide didn't seem to make it in. But vertically integrated mixed use would be mixed use. Yeah, that one. Mixed use where one use would be above another. That tends to be much more complicated and much more expensive to build. Rents in the area lead us to believe that horizontally integrated mixed use is has a more likely chance of success and of being able to pencil and therefore being developable. And so that's one of the recommendations that we're focusing on. And as we look at building mixed use, we look at appropriate massing of facade. We look at driving versus walking areas, visibility, transparency, storefront requirements, all sorts of the sorts of things that help create a vibrant area. If you go to the next slide, I want to talk for just a minute about complete sidewalks. We all talk about complete streets, but I think it's very important to talk about complete sidewalks also because the sidewalk is where the public realm and the private realm meet. And so we want to design sidewalks where the retail can spill out onto the sidewalk in the form of activities, whether they're musicians, whether they're dining, it's dining, whether it's displays. But again, these are things that help people interact with the built environment. And it might also include seating areas, public art, parklets, benches, shade trees, particularly in areas where it can be quite warm in the summer. I'm from just a little bit south of you in Missouri originally, and I certainly remember the summers there and watching the pavement bubble. And then if you go to the next slide, you know, we really want, you know, we want lighting. We want signage that is at a pedestrian scale. If you have a walking district, a walking district, you don't need thirty-six inch storefront letters. Blade signs are more appropriate because you're going to see the sign as you're walking down the street as opposed to from a distance looking into a shopping mall where you need to see a sign that's eight hundred feet away from you. And then finally, these are examples of some of the sorts of amenities that we might like to see in districts, whether it's parklets, outdoor dining areas, you know, landscape areas with seating that are built into the project design. And, you know, these are pictures from frankly, all over the world, showing these kinds of these kinds of built improvements that create vibrancy. Onto the next slide, I want to talk for just a minute about parking. You know, we're likely to not be talking as much about structured parking. But when we do think about parking, it's important to think about the design. We want to have easy wayfinding. We want to do things like making wide entries, which gives the impression to motorists that it's easy to get into this garage. And that that sixteen inch difference in clear height that you see in these pictures is all the difference when it comes to a garage feeling like it's a comfortable, safe place to navigate. And then finally, on the next slide, I want to talk for just a minute about shared parking. And this graphic does such a good job of explaining it. There are different uses that require parking. does such a good job of explaining it. There are different uses that require parking at different times of the day. So rather than necessarily parking everything um, to its own standard, we look at how parking can be shared between uses. And the Urban Land Institute has written the definitive white paper on this, but any transportation engineering company is familiar with this. It allows us to make more efficient use of land, which again helps create vibrancy. So um, in terms of initial recommendations, um, who am I handing it off to here?
I'll be taking over, David. Thank you. Recommendations, we wanted to start off with stormwater. Um, one of the uh, big items that uh, kind of we kicked this redevelopment study off with was the on the screen showing.
Greg, Greg, your mic is cutting in and out. Sorry. Might try that again. It's it's still muted. Hold on one second here.
Better now?
Yes.
All right. Um, so the uh, initial uh, recommendations from the Professional Commerce Park Study identified the four watersheds that uh, you see on your screen here. Uh, we'll focus primarily on the green, uh, which is labeled as the Clive watershed tonight. Um, but what the study identified was that uh, the general redevelopment area is lacking in detention. Um, and sometimes uh, you know, completely under detained from today today's standards. Uh, so what the study identified was how um, what improvements were necessary to bring the area within today's standards for detention to limit the impacts downstream. Um, but it also focused on meeting the detention requirements of the agreements for between West Des Moines and Clive uh, for the water in the watershed area in green for entering Clive uh, under university and ultimately to Walnut Creek. So if you go to the next slide, Chris. Um, so what the study identified, it looked at it on a real local uh, improvement perspective and identified the crossings uh, underneath of university where water was draining from West Des Moines into Clive. Um, and identified improvements to the public infrastructure in terms of pipe sizing and other other uh, elements that could be improved to bring the flows within compliance of that agreement. Uh, but it also looked at identifying uh, small subbasins and catchments that could be used as detention to bring the flows uh, within those storm sewers into compliance. What we're proposing is kind of our initial recommendations and what we'll be looking at with our draft plan is how can we uh, utilize the opportunities uh, that redevelopment brings us in terms of uh, providing some subbasins or catchment areas detention facilities that become amenities within the corridor. And we can do that through a number of different ways. Uh, they can be projects within the street right of way by looking at transportation improvements and how we can make green infrastructure uh, work for our work to our advantage for the detention. Um, and it could also be uh, utilized through shared detention, uh, regional detention type projects where we can consolidate some of these subbasins. Um, specifically, what you see on your screen here uh, might be an opportunity to consolidate down uh, with the University Park uh, development area to provide a regional detention system um, that would allow for credits to be purchased by uh, landowners within the within the watershed to allow for them to redevelop their site uh, with their stormwater being detained offsite and allow for a more efficient redevelopment for them. Um, we feel that we can get some better critical mass to be able to to spur that forward uh, through this approach. And if you want to flip to the next slide, it's it's not specific to the Clive watershed shown here, but uh, the intent with these regional stormwater detention solutions would be to congregate the stormwater detentions and eliminate having small cells on individual sites, getting them into larger regional basins. Um, that which uh, smaller sites could purchase credits within those to allow them to redevelop without having to meet the current stormwater criteria on their sites themselves. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
All right. So uh, and and David, you can jump in and assist me with this. And so uh, one of the properties that we spent a little extra time looking at is of course, the uh, that University Park uh, Shopping Center and some of the struggles it has had. Um, David, do you want to kind of jump into some of our uh, observations?
Well, so this project has um, you know, I I think the the market um, you know, in a way um, has passed the shopping center by. I mean, it it was a difficult center from the very beginning because of the sheer depth of the center um, and the fact that it's built essentially perpendicular to the street as opposed to parallel to the street. Um, and so it's no surprise to me that we're seeing a lot of vacancies um, in this particular shopping center. Uh, I don't see a lot of reuse potential. These larger boxes, there really are not tenants um, who are looking for boxes these uh, this size in the market uh, today. And for adaptive reuse of these boxes, for example, for a distribution center, a last mile distribution center, um, the the um, occupiers of those spaces are looking for what we call cube. In other words, there's um, much greater height than you'd find um, in in some of these older buildings that date back to the eighties. So we looked at the center from an adaptive reuse perspective. Um, also looked at it from a replacement perspective. And so, Chris, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, uh, and obviously, uh, uh, as Greg kind of touched on a little bit earlier, you know, there are some other things that make this property uh, difficult uh, to see substantial redevelopment on its own. Uh, there's a significant portion that's within the floodplain. And obviously, any development does require us to follow those flood uh, floodplain regulations. Uh, typically, we're, we're looking to elevate buildings uh, out of the floodplain uh, to to eliminate them from that uh, uh, designation. And so uh, this does make it a little bit difficult. However, we do look at this site as being a great opportunity uh, that maybe multiple things can be hit at once. And so uh, what we did create as as a series of just concept plans, concept sketches. And in this case, we've rotated the view for you. So now north is is to the left and and to the right is University Avenue. Uh, on what might uh, potentially happen. And so back to David's comments, can we have a little bit of less retail square footage and push it out to have that street frontage uh, that they want? And is this an opportunity to add some residential to this area, uh, knowing that there is residential demand? And then for that area or the majority of the area that's in the floodplain, can that go back to green space, park space, uh, and maybe even serve as uh, improved capacity uh, for Walnut Creek? And so in a couple of the scenarios here, we try to ghost it in. And it's a little bit light on your screen maybe to see, uh, but there's a little yellow line that is the uh, hundred foot or the hundred year flood elevation as we tend to think of it, uh, that that uh, uh, once in a hundred year uh, flood occurrence uh, model. And then that red line running through there is actually the floodway. Typically, we're absolutely staying out of the floodway, never doing anything within that. It's only in the floodplain that you might uh, take the effort to try to elevate uh, your building out of it so that you can uh, do new construction. But in here, we have this scenario where uh, the the center is being mostly removed minus uh, the Burger King and of course, the Car Wash and uh, the other uh, larger restaurant and focusing it on on just the center, the majority of the center itself. In this case, a combination of multifamily and townhome development with this central corridor coming into the site with the potential that this can serve as a trailhead and additional park space uh, for the community, uh, really opening a view corridor into the park and announcing uh, a trailhead that that can be enjoyed and used by all and maybe some event space, additional lawn area. In another alternative, again, removing uh, the majority of the buildings for this site, uh, turning it into a combination of retail and then again, buffering our single family to the west uh, with some townhome row house uh, type development. Again, still have that that main entry boulevard uh, with this uh, this large uh, uh, open space trailhead area.
Hey, Chris, can I ask a question before we move on?
Yeah, please.
This is Ted Weaver. Um, so with that multifamily particularly, i- is that uh, is any of that in the floodplain? Because it still looks awful close to the creek, and if so, how are we dealing with that?
Yeah, and great question. And so really, the thought is, is there's a fine line somewhere here. If you look at the uh, the 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 flood um, uh, depth maps, uh, some of the analysis. As we get closer to the hundred year floodline, as we move south, we start talking about a change in elevation of mere inches versus feet. So now all of a sudden, just digging a little bit of dirt and dragging it uh, to the south, uh, we start to have the ability to raise it up out of the floodplain. And so there's a diminishing return in there somewhere where, you know, we've not left enough land for development. Or, you know, we're, we're still impacting the floodplain too far. And in fact, there's even that next level of analysis. If we're looking to as a region, as Windsor Heights, Clive and West Des Moines, to be investing in stormwater facilities that will reduce our area in general from flooding, maybe we make this green space larger or smaller. Uh, you know, there's kind of an iterative process back because one thing each one of those slides uh, talks about is that that investment and the return on investment. In any of these scenarios, it will take some significant public investment to make it happen. We don't see this happening from the private side acquiring this property, knocking all that retail square footage down and replacing it with one of any of these scenarios and turning over some open space to the city. Uh, that any of these scenarios would take that public investment. And we hope with the the goal of stormwater improvement, flooding improvement, open space and park trailhead, let alone taking a center that's in trouble and turning it in something that uh, new that everyone can be proud of. And so, you know, even if I go forward to this retail concept, yep, some of those retail buildings uh, still showing that uh, floodplain line, but that's that iterative process where well, what's it take to kind of elevate some of this out of the floodplain? Um, and leaving, you know, what amount of land left over for, say, parks and stormwater detention area? Uh, Ted, I hope that answered your question.
It it did. That's very helpful. I appreciate it. And I'm certainly eager to hear more of the details of that public uh, requirement. Um, and what those options look like. Did you guys look at um, any type of water feature over here, like a a pond or a any type of basin like that?
So so that is one, one thing. In fact, I might let uh, Greg just jump in here. But we, we didn't draw it in because, you know, in this case, is this just an area that might see periodic flooding? It's just a little bit lower? Or is it an area that, no kidding, we're, we're digging a a hole in the ground, making a a nice uh, body of water as an amenity, let alone maybe that is fill material uh, to get some of this other area uh, completely out of the floodplain? Greg, anything to add on that?
No, not really, Chris. Other than it, it is an opportunity that there is an opportunity that exists and we're kind of wanting to get that feedback of where, where we, how we utilize that green space. If water amenities would be considered in here, we would dig into that a little bit more there.
Thank you.
Okay. And and we can definitely come back to this issue as well as uh, some comments on the other side of the corridor. Uh, so please feel free to to jump in with any questions. But wanted to continue on with uh, David and Chris providing us uh, some of their other recommendations.
So um, you know, just as a way to to kick this off, I want to talk about some of the things that um, we found uh, investors talked about um, when they talked about the Clive West Des Moines market. Um, so for example, um, there are abundant job drivers. It's not just uh, backroom jobs, but also financial and publishing. So a really diverse employment base. Um, the necessity based markets are resilient for daily needs and commodity retail categories. Um, there's a focus, uh, they tend to be focused on opportunities um, uh, to invest in better retail. Um, not necessarily increasing the aggregate retail footprint, but um, but focused on what's already there that's good. And and then also paying attention to box risk. And we were talking about that with University Park Shopping Center that um, you know, there's, there's already, uh, that's an example of where there was a significant amount of box risk. The boxes went out. There's little thought that um, that they will be able to fill back in. But all these things taken together, you know, really paint a very nice story about the reason that the corridor um, should be expected to have um, to have resilience over the long run, although there needs to be um, there need to be some adjustments made in order to be on a path towards resiliency. Um, like University Park Shopping Center, um, Valley West is not going to be um, a mall again. The market has moved away. It's moved towards Jordan Creek. We don't need a million square feet of specialty retail in this market. However, we have some really key intersections and there are opportunities to leverage off of these gateway intersections and the high traffic counts that we see um, related to these intersections. Um, and the the properties also have the potential to create um, to create focal points. And we saw those in some of the slides that um, that Chris was talking about. Um, do you, I guess I should hand this over to Chris.
Yes, uh, yeah, this one's mine. So as we think about those incentives and what are the public uh, investments going to be, one of the principles that we like to have in a plan is that you don't just have a toolkit, you don't just have the the incentives in place, but you have criteria and evaluation metrics as to that gives and communicates to the private sector under what conditions are these incentives available and and what are the projects that are really worthy of the public investment? And so we think about, you know, as we said earlier, what are the public benefits? And and those public benefits can be local to the to the site where it happens, but you can also think about how they might accrue literally upstream and downstream of the investment, particularly as we're talking about um, stormwater. Um, does the project depend on that investment, the public investment? So does it need, you know, does it not pencil otherwise? And if it doesn't pencil otherwise, are you getting something that really has um, a need in the community, whether it's about a certain kind of housing, um, it's demonstrating a potential or it's eliminating a particular kind of blight or problem? Um, and then is it going to incentivize and encourage subsequent private investment, or is it just a one-off? We like to use uh, a term called a leverage ratio, uh, which is what is the bang for the buck you're going to get? What's the ROI? Um, ideally, we like to see an eight to one ratio, which is for every dollar of public money that goes into a project, you're getting eight dollars of private investment. And you can get creative in how you account for that because again, if you're looking specifically at just a uh, individual parcel, you may not achieve that high leverage ratio, but if, but if it's an investment that has you know, ripple effects or it's solving problems upstream, as we mentioned, your balance sheet can be bigger and you can justify those investments. Next slide, Chris. Um, and so we tend to see the investments and recommendations in a plan coming in kind of two categories. So one are sort of direct money that goes into private redevelopment projects in a public-private format, such as a major redevelopment of Valley West or University Park. Uh, but then there's also those things that truly are public realm, so trucks, trails, public space, open space, um, infrastructure that has a catalytic effect of taking sort of taking offsite infrastructure costs off the balance sheet of the private development. So it really is a incentive to encourage development as long as you're being targeted um, where that takes place. And then to the toolkit, it really is important once you've had those criteria, you've identified where the investments make sense that you have a robust toolkit. Um, here's some of the tools that are available and have been used in in Iowa. Um, there can be more. Um, but you know, once you, once you have your plan in place, you need to have the the money lined up, able to implement. And Chris, I believe you're going to talk about zoning.
Yeah, and so, you know, as we just uh, uh, shared one of those redevelopment scenarios with you for University Park, uh, you know, we obviously know that the Valley West Mall is going through the process of of reimagining itself. Uh, frankly, cutting down the amount of retail square footage, uh, adding multifamily uses. Uh, adding stormwater detention uh, and other enhancements, improvements. Uh, we do see some other areas within the corridor. And from a land use standpoint, uh, really the major shift is uh, our recommendation so far would be looking to be more adaptable and flexible in certain situations, uh, moving towards allowing uh, horizontally horizontal mixed use development as David was talking about earlier. Whereas sites such as, and I'll pick on Valley West Mall, uh, not only allows for retail, but allows for multifamily residential. Not necessarily as a traditional mixed use building with retail on the first floor, residential on the upper stories, but a cohesive development that has retail buildings and uh, uh, residential apartment buildings. And so same may be a And so same may be a situation we'd want to look for zoning, say on that University Park site that allow that flexibility for a developer to work with the city on a, on a mixed development plan. And then we do see those kind of aesthetic overall character improvements that we do have these major minor gateways, these corridors, these pedestrian and trail linkages that can be made along with those streetscape improvements that can help reinforce a brand for the area, reinforce the, the desirability of an area. You know, I, I've, I've been in this area most of my life. I, I watched a lot of this develop. I don't remember the mall actually being constructed. That, that would be just on the edge of my, my life, but I remember so many of these other areas being developed over time. And this, this was where we all went. This was the retail hub. And then it became the office employment hub to serve all that residential to the north and to the south. And I think with some added focus, I can continue that for many years. We just heard from our market and retail strategists that there's, there is still a lot of demand. And so before I jump to the next steps, you've got some experts on the, with you tonight in this. There's a lot of areas to focus in on. Are there questions or topics you want us to be thinking about as we're drafting the plan? Or answering for you tonight?
With a couple of points, if I could, and then let's jump in with the council. But, you know, recently we've had in the, really in the 114th zone, I'll call it, you know, some multiple requests to, to, to change hospitality to multifamily, for example. So I'm interested in your thoughts about that. I think the map shows still as commercial. And then I'm interested in your thoughts about, you know, the 100th Street node there, because I really liked the thinking at 86th Street University. I, I like what you're thinking about there. In fact, I really like what I'm hearing in this, in your analysis and in your planet. Gives me great encouragement, I think. But I am interested in, in, in your thoughts about each of those nodes and, and what those could look like creatively. If you have that this evening, I guess I'd put that out there and address it. Great. If not, we'll move to council questions.
So I, I think your, your question related to, to kind of our hotel restaurant area is, is really key. And, and Chris, do you want to provide just some of the things, our thought process related to your hotels and even some of the, the requested conversions?
Yeah. So a few comments on that. So one, the, you know, what, what the market is showing is that the momentum for hotel development is not here. It's moving out to Jordan Creek. And I think in the future it'll move out towards Waki as they develop more. And so what we see is a common and very predictable pattern in the hospitality industry of, you know, hotels going through their initial cycle and then they re, you know, then the cycle goes around once and the hotels rebrand as, in almost all cases, a lower tier hotel. And then it might go down through a third iteration and it's, until there's a full scrape and rebuild redevelopment of the property. So I think that's what you can expect and what the market is showing, what they're doing. We see particularly from the extended stay hotels that are more adaptable to apartment living. We see that in other markets as well. So I'm not surprised that you have inquiries around that. So, you know, so I think our main comment on that would be that to do otherwise would be a little bit pushing against where the market is headed. And so that's going to require a larger intervention on behalf of the city, you know, through redevelopment assistance or whatever. And if there, you know, and again, it's, it's sort of a little bit of a case by case because not all hotels are designed equally and some I think are more convertible to apartments and would make more sense and others, you know, would not. And so in some ways it's a, it really is, I think it's a policy conversation for the city to have as to, you know, do you want to let the real estate go through another cycle or maybe two cycles until it naturally is feasible for a bolder redevelopment and intensification? Or you want to allow it to sort of, or do you want to, you know, get more involved at probably some significant city intervention in terms of money to incentivize something different?
And if I can even just go a little bit farther and maybe even kind of go into say the, the restaurant environment or the other retail environments. And so really the, the options would be to say no to that conversion to residential. But we'll see a continued decline on the property. Or say yes to the, the conversion to residential, but put some pretty strong requirements in place. You know, a full upgrade, maybe a limited approval timeline that we do it through some special use permit process, that it's a temporary, so that they know that the city is kind of standing on top and watching. No matter what you do, whether it's hold as a hotel or convert to, to in essence apartments, we do think that you need to make sure you draw the line that these are not extended stay. Sometimes we're paying hotel motel tax, sometimes they're not. It really does need to be one or the other. So it's very clear who's doing the life safety inspection. At the hotel, it's fire marshal or state. When it's residential apartment, you know, it's your building inspection. So it's, it's really important to have that clear line that they're not trying to have a foot neither side. And that's where we tend to see some of the most problem. On the other hand, if, boy, we, we do have a concern with, and I sometimes call it like purpose built housing. Conversions are always difficult. They're never quite perfect. Is then you're really kind of in a waiting game until the property gets to a distress point that maybe it's worth a full, as Chris said earlier, peel off, scrape down and, and start over. And that might take city incentives to help push that along quicker. And so I think it's, it, we think it's going to be a case by case basis. I think the same thing comes into play on retail. It's really looking at your, your zoning, decide what are those retail uses you want to see in an area? This is a very auto oriented area. So auto oriented uses, you know, might be appropriate. And then the market will flip things around accordingly for you. Or if a restaurant goes out, something else may come in. Or if, if that's not a desirable use to really hold fast and know something's going to sit bacon a little bit longer. And so I think that is back to the, the policy conversation of how restrictive do you want your zoning to be? How, how stringent do you want your design standards to be? And a lot of this is going to be a case by case basis as we see with infill and redevelopment. The other thing we're kind of happy, excited about is long-term, you know, you've got this medical demand. Is there the ability for medical uses to assemble property over time as well?
Yeah. And that's what I was going to add, Chris, is the, you've got Mercy over there. That's, you've got a cluster of medical, you've got office there. That it's almost a special area that could be, it would be appropriate to have the kind of a deeper conversation about a subarea plan, for example, or redevelopment plan for that area, because you have, the, the thing that makes it unique is the, is, is the medical. And that's an area that's going to continue to grow. It's an industry that's always in demand and is a unique anchor that makes that district potentially have some creative solutions that otherwise wouldn't be there.
I want to get ahead of you. Just as a follow-up here and kind of the second part of my question is, do you have anything to share with us kind of on this 100th Street node here with calls and et cetera? As you've shared about the, the 86th Street area? Any concepts you can share with us kind of?
Are, are you talking about the, as, as I'm showing on the map here, this kind of intersection nodal, you know, improvement idea, or are you talking on the private property, the actual shopping center?
Well, just the whole, that whole area.
Yeah. So, you know, in particular, that center with Fairway and, and whatnot. You know, you've had a lot of good success and in fact, that, that infill and, you know, the Starbucks is a good example. We're kind of nibbling at that excess parking capacity and that you as a city have been very nimble about approving that and reviewing those types of things that the market has done, has done, I think, and jump in David and Chris, you know, a good job of maintaining that center and, and re, you know, turning it into the next iteration and generation. And maybe that's really a symptom that there is a lot of cars driving by and there's a lot of, you know, residential properties in the area and this is their shopping center. And so, you know, I think that's a real positive thing. And this is maybe more of an area to watch and monitor. But to keep an area like that and the other ones in the area successful and positive, we do think this, this corridor branding, this corridor enhancement, you know, and, and there's only so much we can do with University Avenue. It needs to move cars. But are there aesthetic treatments that we can start promoting at these major intersections? And at these minor intersections? And then same thing on really thinking pedestrian and bike traffic. You know, University Avenue and Valley West Drive 100th is just, you know, in that, at least in that run through West Des Moines, it's just not a real comfortable one to ever want to really be on a bike. But, you know, the secondary ones, you bet, and maybe West Town Parkway. And so we can really start changing kind of the appearance and, and feel of this area, making it more welcoming. Cause you just, you look at that, all that residential on the north and south side of the, of, of this corridor. How can we get them to just feel more comfortable getting out of their car and coming in here or park once kind of mindset?
Thank you, Chris. Council, I'm sure other questions?
Yeah. Quick question, guys. A great, great presentation. Really appreciate the level of depth involved in this. Didn't want to get back and touch on office space. As we know, COVID has changed quite a few things on individuals working from home, et cetera. There's currently a, a pretty tremendous glut of office space to market. And I thought that the projection of 2.3 million more of office space was a little rosy on that. I just wonder if you could delve into that a little bit more, give a little more detail.
Yeah. So that 2.3 million that you saw was what was, it's in the larger report that we produced. That was for a larger trade area, which encompasses the entire Jordan Creek and most of West Des Moines. The 200,000 that we showed was what we projected that this study area that's on the map would capture out of that. But those are growth projections that Ted can, Ted Camp from our office can jump on if he wants to turn in. Are, you know, based on population and employment growth projections for the region. So, you know, at standard, within the industries that occupy office space, the, you know, in this area, there's, you know, there are opportunities for infill and there are, and there is a glut today, but you know, thinking forward 20 years, there's still a lot of growth projected for the Des Moines area in those, in those office industries. And, and I'm, I think if you asked, you know, if you polled 100 economists, you're going to get 100 different answers or at least 50/50 as to whether it's going to create longstanding changes in office demand or this is a temporary blip. I tend to lean a little more towards it's a temporary blip in that people ultimately are going to want to be working with other people and that there's limitations to the creativity and the camaraderie that comes from just working remotely. I would say that the flip side to that is your industries, in particular in finance and insurance and stuff, probably lend themselves a little bit more to work from home than, than other industries. But I think by and large though, we do foresee, especially over the longer term, that this plan is designed towards the debt demand will be there.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
And if I can just add one thing that we've been seeing is this emerging trend that those large office owners and, and those, those, those suppliers realizing that their office space needs to be much more highly amenitized than might needed to be in the past. That now workspace is, is becoming more important and even rethinking the, the office space environment. You know, the, the floor plan, what's there for the, the employees?
Well, and not only that, that, you know, what we've seen over the past 10 and 15 years is a, it's a steady decline in the amount of office space per employee as they, you know, with open office con, concepts and just cramming more employees into smaller spaces. And I think what we will see that will be a longer term outcome of the pandemic is that that trend is probably going to reverse a little bit and the need for more spaces and maybe more, maybe back to more private offices. It's going to consume more office space for the same number of employees in the, in the end.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So Chris, you briefly mentioned the kind of bike trails and pedestrian. And, you know, as you said, university is, is very uncomfortable for that type of movement right now. Is, is there any thoughts to, into, in this plan about trying to improve that along university? Not just the north, south arteries? And, and University Avenue, like I'd love for my son to be able to ride his bike and to get to, to some of the stores, but the idea of him crossing University Avenue was just a nonstarter, right? So.
Absolutely. And you, me both. In, in fact, I, I, I used to bike across university just to get to the Green Belt Trail. And, and I would take a little bit more pause thinking about doing that today with those increased volumes and, and speeds. University is a tough one. We have a limited amount of right of way to play with. It would be really difficult along the corridor, especially in some of the, the older spots and the tight points to expand that right of way. We will be recommending some sidewalk and actual crossing point improvements. But the one big thought is that through commuter biker traffic is really to pull it off of university. Focus at least east, west, maybe more towards a road that's more adaptable, say as West Town, because it has lesser volume. Yet promoting these multiple north, south locations, not just say on, on Valley West Drive and West Des Moines 100th, or even 22nd Street, but on these kind of secondaries. And then at focusing at those crossings at university, how can we improve those individual crossing points? To make them feel a little bit safer and a little bit more pedestrian and bike friendly. And so that, that is the focus of our plan, just from when we, you know, got into it and looked at it. It's really hard, at least east, west, to make some substantial changes to university without maybe some unrealistic expectations on right of way acquisition or, you know, dealing with the pavement. It is just very narrow, as you guys know, in, in spots.
Right. And just FYI, we here in Clive like to call 22nd Street 86th Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It, old habits die hard. 86. Yeah, I, I know. We, we all need to do it long ago, agree to a universal street naming system, didn't we? And addressing.
West Des Moines just needs to listen to us. That's all. Last question on the, that university, was it Point or Park? I can't remember.
University Park.
Yeah. Is, was there any thought of having some of that specifically, some of the area that's in the floodplain be city property where, and, and what I'm thinking of specifically is something that we've talked about in the past is like a, an amphitheater that could be used, that would be sustainable in floods. You know, that, but could be used for concerts or, or whatever. And it, you know, if it's not real usable land anyways, you know, that could be a real nice amenity for the community.
You know, we had not talked about that, had not had that idea, but I like where you're headed. We do envision that on the, on the plan I have on the screen, that really everything that's outside that kind of development boundary, that that would all be city space, city park space, city green space, open space. And that it would really could have multiple uses. And you're right, there are certain things that we could put in there that, you know, are, are floodproofed or, 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 you know, you wash off after the flooding event that have less of an impact. Yeah. So I mean, I think that's something we can definitely look at. And as a way to really kind of gel that support behind spending some significant dollars to, to make something like this happen.
Absolutely. It puts a little bit more connectivity to the Green Belt as well. Anything that we can do to kind of create more of that connection, a true connection to the, what I think is, is to our benefit.
One of the reasons why we're showing that, kind of that boulevard, that, that double road opening off of university headed north was to open up a view corridor into this trailhead area. Our thought is really how to, how to make people really feel that, that, like you said, that connection to the trail, that you can see where you're headed and there it is. It kind of puts it top of mind that I want to show up here. And maybe that helps support some of this retail, that this becomes a, a trailhead area. This is a spot to, you know, bring your family, get on the trail, stop and have dinner on the way back.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions? Okay, go ahead, Chris.
All right, well, again, we definitely appreciate your your everyone's time tonight. And so our next steps is we're going to take this back to our consulting team. We're going to be developing the plan draft, reviewing it with our advisory committee, and then reviewing it with the with the the community stakeholders that we have previously met with. And then bring it back to either separate joint workshops or one big combined joint workshop where we can all hear your ideas as we reveal that draft to make sure that we're, we have that plan written in a way that works best for the community. Then after that, we'll finalize that plan draft with the advisory committee and then take it through both commissions and councils for your review and consideration of for the plan adoption, so that implementation can then begin. So again, we definitely, on behalf of the consultant team, appreciate your time and attention tonight and look forward to our next steps.
Chris, thank you, and Chris and David as well. Again, I'll say it again, I think there's great thinking going on here. I know we were kind of Clive-centric tonight and look forward to a, to an opportunity to to have an open session with our colleagues in West Des Moines as well at the policy level. So, thank you, I think this is a great start, and we'll look forward to our next steps.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
I I just wanted to make a comment, so I didn't, you know, didn't surprise everybody later. But I love the concept, I think it's great, especially down there in that 86th area, 86th Street area. You know, I think it goes to the question, when I just heard about the follow-ups and what's next, next steps. It concerned me, we kind of had this discussion on another issue, but it's, you know, always the dollars. And and the concepts are great, and we can spend 100,000 or half a million or whatever building concepts. But if we can never afford it, or, you know, ever have a plan on how to afford it, or even a vision on, we should probably put a benchmark in and stop at some point because we can't get to that next level. And so I say that because, you know, would we be in some of the problem? And and we have to move forward regardless of what's happened in the past. But that area down there with the bridal shop and some other places, the old Toys R Us has to be redone, right? I think that's obvious. But, you know, would we be in the problem of having to do it like we are with the flood zones and such with the amount of water that is coming down from West Des Moines that is not supposed to be at this time? And so those things all have to be configured for me to really take a serious look at this, is what dollars are coming from where, right? Because Clive, you know, I I'm certain we have the dollars that what that looked like. And how many times you said the city is going to have to take a major role. If I had $100 every time it was said tonight, we'd be on our way to finance this thing. But, you know, that role is serious. And what that amount of water is supposed to be coming down there anyways is affecting what we can do in that land down there and how we rebuild it. So I just didn't want to be quiet, so you all were taken off guard last, next time, said, oh, boy, he didn't say a word, you know, during that presentation. I I do like the concept, but I think we need to, I need to personally see some dollars, some financial numbers behind this prior to me taking too many more forward.
Yeah, definitely appreciate that, yeah, that feedback and your comments on that. You know, that's a little bit on why we didn't want to get overly optimistic on saying we can make university, you know, perfect for bikes. Just because we knew we were getting into some really large dollar items. And I I think the discussion on stormwater, some of these redevelopment costs, the cost of the cities is very valid.
Okay, very good. Again, Chris and and group at Council, thank you again. I I know much more to go, this is our first, kind of our first collective meeting, you know, on this planning. And a lot of dots to connect, so certainly appreciate that, and we'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we'll now move on to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. Passes five to zero. Okay, now we have another presentation. This is the introduction of the utility billing specialist and utility billing clerk. And Joyce, you're going to do that for us.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am excited to introduce two new members to our admin team. Unfortunately, we're not be able to get, or we weren't able to get our utility billing specialist Carmen Goodman to join us this evening. But she has come to us from the city clerk's office in the city of Des Moines. She's been with us about three weeks now and great addition to our team. So anytime you're in City Hall, please do stop and introduce yourself to Carmen. And we do have Stephanie Vanderberg. She will be joining us tomorrow as our utility billing clerk. And Stephanie has been employed by the city of Clive in the library in a part-time position. And we're very excited to have her on board. And I believe she is online with us tonight, so.
Stephanie, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Well, good evening, Stephanie, and welcome. Hopefully you're you're on and and welcome to your new position.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I'm really looking forward to it.
Well, standing, we're looking forward to having you on that team. And and if there's anything we can do to be helpful, just just let us know, and we'll look forward to supporting you in your new role. Again, welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Joyce, thank you for the introduction.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move to action items now. And the first one is the bicycle stations and bicycles. And Jeff and Lucas are going to take us through this. Jeff?
Jeff, this is, yeah, this is Pam Quillen, I don't know, are you on mute? We can't hear you.
Hold on a moment, let me see if I can text. Jeff, you should be able to unmute yourself and to start your, your video. We can see your screen that you're sharing right now. So you are in the meeting still.
Sorry, guys, my meeting controls disappeared for a little while, so I think you got me now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry about that, good evening, Your Honor and council members. Before you this evening, our three resolutions that bring bicycle sharing to two Clive Park locations, the Campbell Park and the Clive Aquatic Center. Each resolution before you details the service agreements, the funding agreements, and then the actual purchase of the equipment. The city of Clive is serving as a local public agency for this project, which is effectively the project sponsor. The first resolution for your consideration handles the agreement between the Street Collective and the city of Clive to own, operate, and service the equipment. Legal counsel has reviewed this document, thank you, Christina, for that. The second resolution for your consideration details the funding agreement between the Iowa Department of Transportation and the city of Clive. The third resolution for your consideration is the actual purchase and the approval of the quotes between Trek, which is a bicycle manufacturer, and the city of Clive. With with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. Also on this call is Jeremy Lewis, the Street Collective Executive Director. Jeremy and I have worked very closely on this project for the past four to five months, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeff, council questions for Jeff?
Your Honor, this is Susan, and I do have a question. And that is, we've heard complaints from some of the trail users about the speed of some bicyclists and perhaps not showing trail etiquette. And I'd just like to have a good understanding of what the speed will be of these bicycles. I'm really excited about it, I'm supportive of the project, but I think it's it's worth just making it clear that safety is an ultimate concern.
Sure, thank you for your question. Right here is the is the area, it's up to 17 miles per hour for the bikes, which is much lower than the bicyclist that we've we've had previous issues with in the past. And and maybe Jeremy can speak to to that or Richard as well. But that's much lower than the the cyclist that, for lack of better terms, zoomed down the Green Belt Trail.
I guess, Jeremy Lewis here, Executive Director of the Street Collective, 1620 Northwest Drive in Des Moines, Iowa, to piggyback on what Jeff was saying as far as the 17 mile per hour speed. Safety is the utmost important. These bike share bikes are big, and they're not designed for speed, they're designed for stability. So although there is an electric assist component of it, it's hard to imagine people will be traveling. It would be very difficult to travel up to 17 miles an hour with these pedal-assist electric bikes, given how flat and curvy this section of your great trail is.
Great, thank you very much.
Other questions for Jeff, counsel?
I'd move the first resolution approving the agreement with the Street Collective.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan, further discussion?
Yeah, quick question, I wondered how many bikes will be in each one of these collectives?
Will be 10 bikes at each location.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions, real quick. So Jeff, is is the the revenue collected for this, is this, is that going to the collective or is that?
Correct, it will go to the collective, yep.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then the the five-year outlay that totals 25,000, does it end at that point, or does that renew after five years?
That's the agreement that we have written right now is for the five years. The years after that, Clive will have first right of refusal.
I see, and but in in theory, it would continue, if we wanted to continue it, it would be, it would still continue with that fee, so it doesn't end at that point.
Correct, I I don't know if that can be negotiated, maybe Jeremy can speak to that.
Sure, I I'm sure much will change in the next five years. But with that being said, like you said, Jeff, the city of Clive, we we greatly appreciate this opportunity to expand our bike share program to Clive and look forward to being a strong partner along the way. And if the time's right for the city of Clive to renew a contract after five years, absolutely, you'll have first right of refusal.
Yeah, no, and I'm excited that we're having it, I I think it's a great thing. Matt, can can you tell me, how does this play with our our ordinance with respect to the Green Belt Trail and having electric vehicles on it?
I will let, I'll actually have Richard speak to that. We've talked about that quite a bit with this project, Richard, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yep, I'd be happy to do so. So the way that trail use and bicycles are kind of written up in the city code that electric bicycles would be allowed as long as they're under a certain horsepower. And working with, working with Trek and some of the other organizations and just kind of seeing what most electric bicycles are, they meet that threshold of the power for what bicycle can be considered and still have some electric assist on the the city trails. The key part is that it has to be electric assist, it can't be a full electric bicycle. There is a difference with some of them where you don't have to pedal at all, but with these you have to pedal, which helps it be approved or legal within the city along trails.
Got it, thank you.
And just one more quick question, sorry. Was as far as maintenance on the bikes and upkeep on those, who's ultimately responsible for that? And and how does the city make sure that this is being taken care of in a timely fashion?
Yep, the the Street Collective is responsible for that, and it's outlined fairly detailed in the the agreement as well.
Okay, so Resolution A has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
Move the second resolution approving agreement with the Iowa DOT.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan, further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
And move the third resolution approving the purchase of the bicycle stations and the bikes.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan, further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. And that item passes five to zero, exciting. It'd be great to have this project come, come to us. Thank you, Jeff, Jeremy, and and Richard for bringing this to us. And we're going to look forward to giving it a test run, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number two, this is regarding general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2021A, and general obligation urban renewal, public safety facility bonds, series 2021B. We have two resolutions there, and Joyce?
Yes, this is the final proceedings to get our bond sale wrapped up. These resolutions will authorize the issuance of the bonds, so there's no further questions. We'll have the delivery of the proceeds will be April 22nd.
Questions, counsel?
I'd move the first resolution approving the loan agreement and GL corporate purpose bonds for series A.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
And move the second resolution authorizing the urban renewal public safety bonds, series B.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. And that item passes five to zero, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Looking forward to moving forward. Okay, action item number three is the first consideration of proposed ordinance number 1105, amending Chapter Five of Title Six, the city code, stop or yield streets and intersections, and Mr. May.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity here. Last February, we entered into a professional service agreement with H.R. Green to conduct a study at the intersection of Douglas Parkway and Berkshire Parkway. That was brought about by a petition we received from residents with concerns over that intersection. H.R. Green completed the study. We met with residents through a virtual meeting last November and presented the findings. There was a 52-page report, I did not include it, would be glad to share it, those 52 pages of saying that it does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal with a short paragraph that commented that there was some issues with sight distance being limited at the intersection for east and westbound traffic. And installation of multiway stop control at that intersection of Douglas Parkway and Berkshire could be considered this time. Staff believes it's warranted due to those conditions and some of the issues related to that. So we're bringing forward to you this change in the ordinance, the first reading, recommending that that intersection become a four-way stop. One of the reasons it took a little long is as we were reviewing this to add that as a four-way stop, we discovered that there's some issues with our through designation that basically didn't address every possibility in the intersection. I think we've added language to address that issue by recognizing that just because it's a through street, if there's a traffic signal, the traffic signal takes precedence over that intersection and not the requirement that all traffic stop approaching the through street. So there's basically two changes in the proposed ordinance. One is in 65-1, which adds some language there to the through-street designation. And then in 65-3, we designate Douglas Parkway and Berkshire Parkway as a four-way stop. Be glad to answer any questions. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? I think there's been conversation, you know, about, certainly about this before, and I think the general consensus, but are there questions for Jeff?
I'll move that ordinance number one one zero five, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Thank.
Spooed by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? Passed as five to zero. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Look forward to getting that improvement made.
Well, we've got the second and third meeting to have and before we can do it, we'll be bringing it back at the next meeting.
Understood. It's the first consideration, but it's a good start.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And I, I, I'm sure that the residents would tell you that it's not fast enough.
No, probably bring back next time if there's no objections, the second and third together. We'll also, prior to putting it up, put the message boards out for a week, letting residents know it's going to be coming.
Outstanding. Very good.
And Mayor, if I might add too, we'll be communicating with the school district as well because obviously this is a change that will have a, a major impact potentially on the way that a lot of their students and their families are approaching that building. So we'll make sure we communicate with them as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Pete. Okay, well, so action item number four then is the third consideration of the zoning ordinance number one zero nine nine amendment with regard to signs. And I, you know, as I look at this, hopefully McCoy is fired up with, with his consideration speech for each of these. So Amanda.
I'm ready to roll, Mayor.
All right. Very good. Amanda, third consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, tonight is the third and final consideration of the update to the sign ordinance amendment. There have been no changes since the second consideration and we have not received any public comments on this outside of what you had heard at a previous meeting regarding the political signs. So with that, staff would recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel questions for Amanda?
I'll move that ordinance number one zero nine nine be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
It's moved by Michael, seconded by Eric. Is there further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number one zero nine nine is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Amanda. We will move to action item number five, which is the third consideration of ordinance number eleven hundred to move, excuse me, to amend provisions of title ten, building regulations of the city of Clive regarding building, electrical, plumbing, energy conservation, mechanical, fuel, gas and existing building codes. Ryan, you've shepherded us through this far. Do you have anything to add?
I don't, counsel. Thank you for your time tonight. We're at the third consideration and we have not received any public comments or feedback from contractors or the general public. So we would recommend approval on your consideration.
Questions, counsel?
I'd move that ordinance number one one zero zero be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Spooed by Michael, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? That item passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number eleven hundred is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number six is the second consideration of ordinance number eleven oh one to amend provisions of title ten, building regulations of the city of Clive regarding fire codes, Fire Marshal Clay. Anything to add?
Mayor, counsel, thank you. I have not received any comments from the public. So in regards to the second reading, I will take any questions, comments or concerns that anybody may have.
Questions, counsel?
I'd move that ordinance number one one zero one, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption. Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero for the second reading. Thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number seven, regarding utility rate adjustments for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Second consideration of each of these and Joyce.
Yes, as you said, this is the second consideration of the utility rate ordinances that we approved through the budget process or incorporated in that process. So it's a three percent increase for water rates, two percent for sewer and ten percent for stormwater. And we have had no public comment since the last meeting as well, so.
So we'll need to, we'll need to read each of these, correct? Joyce?
Yes, please.
Questions, counsel? Go ahead, Michael.
Move that ordinance number one one zero two, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption. Second.
Spooed by Michael, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. That's the second reading. Action item B, second consideration of eleven oh three.
Move that ordinance number one one zero three, having been considered by the council, be voted.
I think that's moved by Michael, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero. Item C.
Move that ordinance number one one zero four, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption. Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Saying now, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero for its second consideration. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next a discussion item regarding the annual flood preparedness update. Chief Rowe? Enlighten us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to cover the flood response plan. Whether we have an actual flood or whether we do our, our annual tabletop, there's always a number of things that we learn and, and action items that we come up with. We did this year's tabletop on March thirty-first and kind of the key things that we're working on this year. As you'll remember, along Seventy-Fifth Street, the new berm was, was built that helps provide some protection against North Walnut Creek. So with the, with the rise in North Walnut Creek, we used to start evacuations. If it hit eight feet and rising at Hickman Road, we're able to temper that back a little bit to nine feet and rising because of the value of that berm. The other thing that we're going to focus on this year is we've really identified that we, we have a lot of good evacuation plans, but we, we don't have that and ways to get communicated with the different languages of our community. So Pete and I are going to be focusing on that and trying to come up with a, a better way to be more inclusive and encompassing with some of our evacuation communications. We have a desire to, to test the Code Red system. We do get some good feedback when we actually use Code Red as far as the number of phones that we reach. But we want, we do want to plan a, a community test to, to make sure that we're reaching people in the numbers and, and with the messages that, that we desire. Our flood plan has historically focused really west of the interstate is where we, we've had the bulk of, of our, our problems and issues. But we do recognize that we could have some issues west of one hundred and twenty-eighth street. So we're going to start taking a look at the flood impacts there and what kind of planning needs that, that exist that we would need to respond with in the event of a flood. And of course, there's always numerous updates as far as resource lists, staff phone numbers, our notifications, job aids and, and those kind of things. So overall, a, a very successful tabletop exercise and, and we come out of that with a, a healthy to-do list to, to make it better. And with that all, as far as the flood response plan, I'll entertain any questions. And if not, then we'll move on to Doug.
Questions for, for Rick, counsel?
I have a question, just a comment, chief. I, I'm a, I appreciate the Code Red and I think it works great. Just getting the word out more, like you said on that and testing it, but really getting it out to more users is the biggest issue, but I think it's a great tool, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions or comments for Rick, counsel? Okay, we're going to move on to the watershed.
Thank you. Just wanted to spend a few moments. I had provided a, a copy of the project to-do list, if you will, out of the city's portion of the hazard mitigation plan. It is appropriate and, and a required element as part of, as part of our community rating system to annually review that list. Take a look and see if there are specific projects that need to be added or identify if projects are no longer needed or, or or if there's no funding for some of those projects that we either evaluate whether or not they are still valuable or whether or not there's a new strategy associated with them. So the list was provided to you. I'll just highlight a few of them in terms of the, the projects that have had work put into them over the last twelve months or so. As Rick had indicated, there were some minor improvements along University Boulevard and on Seventy-Fifth Street. Both the, the berm along the Boulevard had some adjustments to accommodate some low spots and some settling that had occurred. So that had been addressed. With the properties that we had purchased on Seventy-Fifth Street, it did give us some available space to make another berm along that area to address some of that flooding condition along North Walnut Creek. Again, neither of those facilities are levees. They are not protecting people or property to a standard that a levee would. But what they do do is provide more time. It gives us more time to prepare and to communicate with property owners to get out of harm's way when, when that, that potential exists. So those were two very good minor adjustments that we were able to make. We have also continued with the university buyout program. We have expended all of the funds in that program to this point. We have thirteen properties that were acquired and the buildings removed. If you'll recall, that puts us at about twenty-five percent of the properties within the flood buyout area. So there's still quite a ways to go with that particular project. And just to give you some reflection of interest, we do still have property owners that were on the original list and we have had communications with other properties that are not or did not submit during that first buyout program that do have interest because they see those flood risk and appreciate the fact that it may be the appropriate time to, to, to move on from, from those properties. So still quite a bit of interest in that space. That then is also leading into that next question that we talked about, which is if we are able to assemble all of the property within the flood buyout area, what do we do with it? And we unfortunately had gotten a little bit behind in terms of schedule for answering some of that question with both the District One Plan as well as the Water Resources Plan. But those answers are going to start percolating and starting to have a much more engagement from the community and, and from staff and elected officials in that conversation within the next few months. So we are looking forward to that. Once we do kind of have that vision, if you will, for that future space, you'll recall that we were fortunate enough, fortunate enough to receive some hazard mitigation funding to allow us to take that vision to the next step, which is more of a cost benefit analysis, which may position our community for being able to attract additional future funds for the actual implementation. So quite a bit of work in that area, but certainly quite a bit more work to, to be done to address those flood risks that we know are, are only going to continue to be impactful in that neighborhood. Just a couple of other quick ones to, to highlight. Although we don't have a lot of tangible results, the, the analysis, the study, the conversations are all continuing with respect to the opportunities for upstream water management. Having those conversations like we had on University Avenue with our, our neighbor to the south, West Des Moines, there are interest in looking at shared or some type of regional stormwater management in certain locations. We are also with some fortunate funding. We are able to put together with the Corps of Engineers in the state. We are working with our watershed, broader watershed partners, looking at those upstream opportunities. Whether or not it is doing wetlands or ponds in Waukees or the undeveloped portions of Grimes or Urbendale or even out in the county. Those ideas are continuing to be evaluated. We are looking forward to moving a little bit beyond the can it work? And get, get more into what is necessary to create that flood risk reduction. And then more importantly, what does it cost? How do we pay for it? And, and get it actually implemented. So again, not a lot of specific action at this point, but we are continuing to be encouraged by the regional conversations that are happening in, in that area. So again, that's just kind of a quick whirlwind tour of, of the efforts that the community is making to reduce those flood risks for both property owners as well as other people within, within the space. It continues to be a significant issue for us. And as you can see, we're continuing to put quite a bit of resource behind addressing these long-term issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, counsel, for Doug?
I don't have a question, but since you said I could talk the rest of the night with all those emotions, I'm going to take this opportunity to thank Doug and his team. The, the progress they've made on that flood insurance, can't remember what it's called, but you know, the, the number, the rating has been pretty incredible. And I'm not sure there's another city in the, in central Iowa metro that has taken such an active role in getting that down for the residents. And so I know we've had a lot of talk about that, but I wanted to just thank him and, and pretty, and give him kudos. It's impressive.
Well, and, you know, thank you, Mike. I think that's a pretty valid point. You know, we started on that issue not knowing anything. And everybody looked at us and our staff got busy and, and, and worked with the federal government and figured it out. And, and now have, have really moved us forward to providing solutions for our residents. So pretty cool. And thank you for mentioning that. Other questions for Doug on this item?
I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is a, a, a big problem and it's a long-term problem. And Doug, I'm, I'm really encouraged by the regionalism and the conversations you're having upstream from us. uh Doug, I'm I'm really encouraged by the regionalism and the conversations you're having upstream from us. We all know Clive is at, you know, the bottom of the funnel right here and these are exciting to hear and and you know, interesting to to to, as we flesh through these and percolate some new ideas to uh to really start to mitigate the stormwater and and the issues that we're having right now. So I I really like the direction we're going.
Appreciate that as well. Others, counsel? Doug and Rick, I thank you. I appreciate the update and look forward to more. Okay, we'll move uh to reports now. And Pete, we're going to start down at your end of the dice.
Thank you, Your Honor. This today and yesterday, the Clive Police Department is at the middle of a really great story. Uh, a ring was found on the Green Belt Trail. The people who found it brought it to the police department and the police department then used their extensive reach, using uh social media to get the word out and indicate also that there was some unique marking on this ring that really only the owner, the real owner of the ring would know. Within twenty-four hours, then that person contacted, got in touch with the police and the police were able then to return that that ring. The communication side of this story is unbelievable. The reach just to get it out, to get the word out that the police department had the ring was impressive. But since then, so many others have grabbed this and really uh taken the message that Lieutenant Rayburg and others put out saying, hey, they what a great example of people looking out for each other and a great example of kindness. And Clive KCCI has picked it up, any number of national affiliates of CBS have also picked it up and other groups. We're talking tens of thousands of people our accounts reached in just the Facebook universe, not to mention ears and eyes catching it on other platforms. So kudos to the police department and a great example of how some positive storytelling has an opportunity to uh really advance the name recognition of our city and certainly the values that we want our community to be known for. We'll have a similar opportunity coming up next week. On Thursday, we'll be inviting media to join us at Genesis Health Center on Hickman for a life-saving ceremony, a life-saving award ceremony. Chief Rowe will be presenting awards to some civilians and also some first responders who helped save a life at the fitness facility back in February. So we look forward to working with our business partners on that uh and hopefully getting some good storytelling accomplished about our fire department. Uh, one of the key things that you may recall the fire department identified in their strategic plan was identifying ways they could tell a story of ways that uh of all the diverse services they offer besides just being there when they need us in an emergency. And one of those uh strategies that we can use is events like this, word to media, where we can go out and tell businesses and others, if you convene people, it's important to have some good edu, uh some good knowledge and good skills in place. Need to know how to use a fire extinguisher. You need to know who you have a plan for your staff on how you're going to contact the first responders. Need to know where that AED device is as well. And in this situation, actually, they did use that AED device and it made the difference between a life and a death potentially. Finally, we've had excellent conversations with Congresswoman Axnes's team about the community project appropriations process that's been resurrected for this Congress and the House of Representatives, at least, still watching for direction from our friends in the Senate. And we are preparing applications using the Congresswoman's forms to uh produce uh present two projects. Now, these weren't the only projects, obviously, where we'll need federal investment, and they're certainly not the only projects where we think there's good collaboration opportunity between the Congresswoman and the city. But given some of the parameters and some of her uh sort of just strategic preferences, knowing what she will and won't be able to fit into some of these funding vehicles, we think that these two projects are our best fit. One would be an expansion of the PAC mental health program that has been so successful with the fire department. You'll recall that that was funded uh using some CARES Act dollars. That was one of the first recovery bills that came through at the end of twenty twenty. Fire Department was able to use some of those dollars to pass through Oak County to launch a five-year commitment so that every person on that team is able to go and have a pro proactive annual check-in with a mental health provider. That's what PAC stands for, proactive mental annual check-in. These aren't designed to be forcing anybody to go as and as Chief Garcia would say, sort of spill your guts to somebody. If you don't want to, you don't have to. You could talk about anything you want with that mental health provider. The report, though, from his team and all everybody at the at the department, all his colleagues, has just been overwhelmingly positive. Chief Vayner, I mentioned uh when I foreseeing those results and hearing it just anecdotally from other people in the building, that he thinks this would be a very good fit for the police department as well. And so we will use the community projects program to see if there's an opportunity here to get some federal support to expand a similar program for the Clive Police Department and possibly even further than that. So more to come as we keep uh working out funding and also thinking about the logistics. The second program that we're going to, project we're going to present would be a STAD grant proposal for federal investments into stormwater components of Greenbelt Landing. Greenbelt Landing is one of the highest priority projects for us. It has a major fundraising component. It involves a number of community partners, including the Clive Community Foundation. We need to assemble lots of dollars to make this work, and this would be potentially an avenue to focus some federal dollars on this project and help us build it into something that is even a greater amenity for the community and a real regional hub for the broader metro as we think about our trail network. With that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Pete, thank you. Uh, counsel questions for Pete? Comments? Okay, thank you, Pete. Ted, you're next.
I have nothing to nightmare.
Okay, thanks, Ted. Uh, Eric?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Eric, thank you. Uh, John?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And I'm going to pass right next to Susan.
Well, I'd just like to say I've appreciated attending the Iowa Water Conference virtually over the past three days. And one of the things that was really hammered home was that we should all look to expect continuing trends of Iowa getting more and more wet and more of that coming in the form of um increased heavy trans um heavy precipitation events.
Indeed. Thank you, Susan. Uh, Michael?
Mr. Weaver has texted me to tell me I've said too much, so I'll pass.
Very good. Matt, we're down to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a few uh items tonight that I wanted to uh bring the council up to speed on legislatively. The Senate bill that was introduced that includes the phase out of the commercial property tax and industrial property tax rollback um did pass the Senate uh earlier this week and then now is sent over to the House. It did have some amendments uh done to it. One kind of interesting amendment and um that was shared earlier this week um by DART representatives is there is a provision in there now that allows uh a regional transit authority similar to DART to under following a a boat of a referendum vote of the population being served by that district. So that'd basically be the whole metro area in DART's case to implement um a hotel motel tax of, I think it was five percent, up to five percent. I can't remember off the top of my head, but that was kind of an interesting item that was included uh in that amended into that bill. Um, still need to get some more background and history on on that. But as the council will recall from the DART presentation earlier this year, there was a desire to try to find alternative funding models. One thing I will note with that uh particular item that it would require a dollar for dollar reduction in the property tax levy that that DART levies. So this is um, so it's not an increase. It's just more of a shifting from property tax to a hotel motel tax. So that would be on top of, the way I understand it, on top of the seven percent that's currently charged uh by the cities in the metro. So anyway, just kind of an interesting thing legislatively that's going on there. Uh, we'll see what happens over in the House. Uh, also, just a reminder, a couple of key items a week from tonight. Uh, the tour of the Public Safety Center, the new Public Safety Center for the council at five thirty. Um, those, there's a encourage everybody to park in the the kind of the church parking area, the the Chin Church to the west. Uh, they've allowed us to use their parking um for when we have visits like this. So uh park in that area and then we'll be on the lookout to to bring everybody together and walk through uh the building. Excited to show you all the work that's being done. I'll be sharing the most updated drone footage of the construction of the facility here in my weekly update tomorrow. I'm just excited to see all the walls going up and uh starting to have some paving done inside and the roof is all up. So a lot of things are happening out there and now we're starting to get into hopefully some drier weather and uh get really going on the site work uh outside of the building, which will be nice. And then uh just a reminder too, on April twentieth, I think Cheryl sent out an email about this in terms of registration for the annual uh Clive Chamber Event. Um, that will be held. There'll be up, but there's both the in-person and virtual option associated with that. And I know she's been sending those details out for registration. And then just a reminder too, as we get into May, that first Thursday in May is um scheduled for a a work session, a city council work session where uh we'll cover um the main topic will be District One Neighborhood Plan Update. There'll be some other items that will include that I mentioned in my memo. But what I wanted to finish with is um with that, uh, those items being discussed in May, obviously, the university corridor discussion tonight. Next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward a a a very detailed update on the green, on the Greenbelt Landing project. Um, just a lot of top priority items that the council had on your strategic planning list. We're kind of in full, full discussion mode and full um uh planning mode for those items. And there'll be a number of opportunities for the council to weigh in on those priorities here, obviously, starting tonight and over the next month. So really excited to be bringing some of those uh next step, next steps and action items forward for your consideration, Your Honor. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, counsel questions for Matt? I would add to Matt's earlier comment uh with regard to the the April twentieth Chamber Event, recognizing Business of the Year and Citizen of the Year. Uh, and this is public now, but but that Ruth Hightop was chosen uh as the Citizen of the Year. Uh, I know some of you know her uh and if you see her, uh, certainly congratulate her. You'll see press releases and other social media uh celebrating uh uh her nomination and selection. So proud of Ruth and all the work that, good work that she's done in our community. Other questions for Matt, counsel? Well, seeing none, I'm going to move over to Matthew. Matthew, any additional correspondence we need to know about?
We do not have anything further, Your Honor.
Thanks, Matthew. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn us at seven thirty-two PM. Thanks all. Spring is here. Have a great weekend.